All right, let's go ahead and convene today. The February 17th, 2022 Newport Beach Planning Commission. And we will have Curtis, our Commissioner Elmore, give us the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome back, everyone. It's been, this is our first meeting for the year. And we, I think the last one was the first of December, so hopefully I remember how to do all this. But I think we're in good hands with staff. So you want to go ahead and proceed with the roll call?
Yes, all Commissioners are present this evening.
All right, this part in the agenda, this is for public comments. This is a time for anyone in the public that would like to come and make comments of anything that is not on our current agenda. Feel free to come up for three minutes and let us know what's on your mind. So there's, it looks like, it looks like we don't have any comments for general public comments. So we'll go ahead and move on to item, section, item five here, which is requests for continuances. Any requests for continuances?
Chair Lowery, none.
All right, none, okay. Move on to six. This is our consent items. I'm going to go ahead and move to separate these two items. I was not here at the last meeting, so I'm going to abstain from the minute. So instead of improving them together, we'll just take them separately. And let's go ahead and start with item number one, the minutes of December 9th.
I'll make a motion on those to approve. I think Mr. Mosher had provided some edits that I'll enter into the motion as well.
Second.
And if we, I'm sorry, if we could just confirm that there are no public comments?
Yeah, is there any public comments to the minutes from December 9th? Seeing that there's none, we have a motion and a second.
Commissioner Rosie, abstaining. The motion carries five zero with Commissioners Rosie and Chair Lowery abstaining.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to item number two. The, I believe I'm saying that, Kochaba encroachment. This, again, this is consent items. So if you see if there's any public comments, open up the public comments if there's any.
Chair Lowery, members of the Commission, my name is Jim Mosher. This being on the consent calendar, I have no doubt you're going to approve it. But I would like to say, I do not know the history of why, this is a request for an encroachment into the public right-of-way along Fullerton Avenue in Newport Heights. I do not know the history of why the streets were laid out with the wide public right-of-way that has never been developed into sidewalks and have been allowed to be used and give the appearance of being private front yards. I just think somebody should point out that at least along Fullerton Avenue, these fences up near the curb are not the rule. There are actually many more houses without them than there are with them. And the proliferation of the fences, I think, at least, gives the streets a more privatized, narrower, less welcoming look than was probably originally envisioned for them. So that is my comment, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments? Like, there's none. A motion on this item or any questions to staff on this item?
No, I'll make a comment. The fences that I saw aren't by the curb, they're back. And this one is back, I believe, six feet. And it matches other ones on the street. There's a walkway up to it. I don't see an issue with it. Therefore, I'd make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. All right, we'll move on to our public hearing items. And we'll start here with item number three. The Beard Residence, PA 20 dash, or 2021-1303625 Ocean Boulevard. And David, I think you're, you're on for this one.
Chair Lowery, I'll go ahead and start the presentation here today. And I will be introducing Associate Planner David Lee to make the bulk of the presentation. I just wanted to kind of start off by saying, you know, this is a replacement of an existing house. The house, at least on the western portion, is lower than the existing house. So it does improve that view, which is consistent with local coastal program policy. So this is the primary reason that you'll, you'll soon hear that staff is recommending approval of the project. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to David Lee to go through the more particulars.
Right. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Chair Lowery and to the rest of the Commission. Good evening. My name is David Lee with the Planning Division. And this is the Beard Residence Project at 3625 Ocean Boulevard. Again, like Jim mentioned, it's a demolition of the existing residence and construction of a new 5,413 square foot, single-unit residence with an attached 522 square foot, two-car garage. The application requests a variance for height setbacks and parking, also a coastal development permit, as well as an encroachment permit. Just to give an overview of the project site, as you can see, it's located on Ocean Boulevard between Poppy Avenue and Orchid Avenue. It's located on the bluff side, abutting the Pacific Ocean. And with that yellow box indicating that there's 10 houses in that row in that block that is similarly located on that bluff site. Here's an image of that bluff and the subject property, whether you want to call it red or pink, as you can see, I've noted there. I just want to give a quick background. The existing residence that's there today was authorized originally by a variance that was approved in 1963. It authorized an eight-foot encroachment into the front setback. And it also authorized a building height that is three feet above the Ocean Boulevard curb. In 2001, a modification permit was granted for a major renovation, which allowed the chimney to further encroach into the front setback all the way. And also authorize an addition and also a deck encroachment further into the bluff. Just zooming in on the property, I just wanted to highlight the existing condition. There is a, in green, a 10-foot front setback. And as you can see, the existing residence encroaches into that setback. There's also a four-foot side setback requirement, where the existing residence does encroach between a foot and a foot, a foot and a half on each side, or half foot, sorry. And lastly, there's a rear setback of 10 feet at the rear property line. However, indicated in red is the limit of development. So they can't develop in their red area, since the code does not allow for further encroaching into the bluff where the existing development line lies. So with all that taken away, this blue area signifies kind of the buildable area of the property without any deviations, where it's sitting on a large lot. The applicant is also requesting an encroachment permit. And the yellow indicates the public right-of-way area where they would be encroaching with accessory structures and driveway and planters. That's between Ocean Boulevard and the subject property. Just wanted to show you the proposed home, highlighted in blue. And here's, I'll add the setback layer in. The green is the 10-foot front. You have the sides. And that red is that line of development that they can't cross, since that's the existing line. Again, that yellow portion indicates the public right-of-way between Ocean Boulevard and the property line. Just wanted to show some quick elevations, so you get an idea of what the home looks like from plan view. This is the front when you're looking at, when standing on Ocean Boulevard. Here are some side elevations. The top one is a southeast elevation and the bottom is the northwest elevation. And this is the elevation when you're looking from the ocean towards the bluff. Just want to go through some development standards really quick. And I've highlighted in yellow the areas or the standards that the applicant is seeking deviation through the variance. So for the overall height, the requirement is to be at the average curb height. The existing home currently, as it is, is three feet above the curb, which was authorized by the variance in 1963. The applicant is proposing to meet that height. They are not proposing to exceed what is existing today. In terms of the flat roof, there's a 24-foot requirement. And the existing home is, at the worst-case scenario, when measuring from the grade below on a slope, is 44 feet high. The proposed is going to be 38 feet at that same area. It's not the same area as the garage, but it is to, to the east of the garage. So it's going to be lowering from the existing by six feet. The applicant is proposing to encroach into the setback 10 feet. And also asking for a variance to provide a two-car garage, where a three-car garage is provided, is required. And just to note, the existing home does have a two-car garage today. So this is an aerial on the topography. I just want to quickly show the slope. As you can see, the first contour at the front of the house, it's 90 feet above sea level. And as you go towards the rear of the home, it starts to drop from 90 all the way down to 50 feet above sea level. And just some takeaways, the slope goes in multiple directions. So it's not just from front to back, but it also goes towards the side, towards 3619, the neighbor. And the major takeaway, I would say, is that there is approximately a 40-foot decline from one part of the home to the other in that direction. Here's another view of the home when looking from the ocean. Just wanted to show that this is the bluff area that the applicant cannot develop into, so the bluff will not be altered. And there was a geotechnical investigation study provided that shows findings that the bluff would not be harmed with this development. Again, this is a slope that goes all the way down. And there's a slope, as you can see from the subject property to the neighboring properties. Is that, is that a transition of the bluff, where there's a large drop from side to side? Just want to take this, use this slide and show the deviations that have been given to this, this block. So an H stands for height deviation. And as you can see, nine out of the 10 homes have received some sort of height deviation. The S stands for setback deviation. And all 10 of the homes have received setback deviation into the front setback. Just wanted to give an image of the existing home. And I wanted to highlight that red line, which is currently three feet above the curb. Additionally, the Planning Commission also authorized the chimney to be five feet above the curb. And something to note is that that height spans from side to side. It does not dip down and it does not modulate in the existing design today. Wanted to show this in plan view. As you see, the top is the existing home. And the garage is at three foot above curb. Just wanted to give that outline in red. That is a profile of what exists today. And below is the proposed outline of the, of the project. And that garage height, three foot above curb, is indicating the same height as what's existing. And there you can see the profile for that. As you can see, the right side of the home drops six feet below the height of the garage. So it's actually three feet below the curb height. So that green block just indicates the volume that the applicant is removing and providing additional public views of the ocean from that side. An additional picture is of the house from the side. As you can see, there's a tall vertical plane of the subject property with the chimney there, over the neighbor at 3619. That, yes, that is the existing home today. Here's another view of that existing home today, the vertical plane over the neighbor. I'm showing this in plan view and elevation. The left is the existing and the right is the proposed home. I've drawn that line, red line across, indicate three feet above curb. I wanted to point out, the applicant has reduced that straight vertical plane up and has actually stepped back that portion that's above the curb height, 15 feet from the neighbor's property line side. So if you keep your eyes on the red and the green, I'll show you this in 3D. As you can see, it's been set back, you know, approximately 15 feet. So that vertical plane has been broken up and provided modulation. And what that's doing is also providing additional public views from Ocean Boulevard, as well as from the neighbor's viewpoint. Staff has provided a draft resolution with all the findings. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve this project and adopt the resolution, approving the variance, the coastal development permit, and the encroachment permit. And I know that there's some comments about typographical errors in the resolution. And I just wanted to let the Commission know that those can be fixed, they will be fixed by the time there's a final resolution. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant from Brandon Architects are here and they have a detailed presentation as well, whenever you're ready for them.
Thank you, David. We'll start off here. If there's any Commissioners, has any questions for staff at this point? Looks like we don't. So we'll, let's start off here for our ex parte communications. And we'll, we'll start down, yeah. Know the drill.
I spoke to members of the public about this item.
None.
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 I had conversations with Brandon Architects, with several of their staff members in regards to the project. And then I also spoke with representatives and neighbors of the, of the opposition.
Thank you. All right, we'll open up the public hearing now and start with the applicant, if they have a presentation that they would like to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Lowery, and Commissioners. My name is Ryan McDaniel. I'm a principal architect with Brandon Architects, presenting on behalf of the Beards today. First and foremost, I want to thank city staff. We've worked together over the last nine months closely, before we ever put pen to paper, reviewing what's there today with the standards of our current zoning and the LCP. You know, making sure first and foremost that the design that we presented was something that the city could support. And that was a justifiable outcome and improvement, obviously, to what's there today. So as David has highlighted very well, the existing house was approved in 1963. The relationship of that house to the street, the steep sloping property has not changed, but our zoning requirements have changed. And also our ability to meet those requirements with construction methods and technology have improved to be able to solve these complex scenarios to the best of our ability. And so what we have here is a kind of a pulled-back perspective, looking from the street, the higher vantage point from the sidewalk across, showing the existing condition and showing the significant improvements with the proposed design as far as the view corridors from the street and therefore the public view. We have limited that upper footprint to the garage, to a small entry foyer landing area that serves the garage, the elevator, and the staircase that goes down. And the remaining roof to the right, when viewed from the street, has been lowered to the lowest extent possible, leading towards the street. As we get closer, that improvement is just further articulated. We have been working with the city. As I understand it, there is a master plan in place for Ocean Boulevard and the landscaping there. So the hedging and landscaping will be lowered and maintain below 36 inches in height. No site walls are proposed over one feet above the top of curb. So all the landscape improvements there are lowered as well. When we just look at different vantage points with our 3D model and photography, we can see here another view from the street when it relates to the side massing there and a significant improvement of that lower profile as it not only relates to the front elevation, but also as it carries down the side towards the rear. Another point from Inspiration Point, from a public view perspective, this exhibit represents just the reduction of massing as we, as the development reaches the rear of the property or the bluff and limiting the amount of three-story volume amassing to provide relief to this structure. Generally, we've reduced the current existing roof, which is three feet above the mean top of curb, by 60%, which has been a significant reduction. And our, the remaining roof has been lowered at a minimum of six feet. And as we approach the bluff, it has been lowered from 14'6" all the way down to grade with a center view deck with an open trellis at the center of the home, which further reduces the leading edge of that existing roof line, which is the most impactful related to view from above and across the street. We've worked closely with the city and the Traffic Engineer and Public Works. We know that the maximum city drive slope is 15% and the building code maximum is 20%. So we have proposed a 19.1% maximum drive by the elevation that we have set the garage. In this case, form follows parking. And that is our maximum drive slope that we can meet while still meeting the 11% differentials required by the city to avoid the car bottoming out. The proposed ceiling height in the garage is proposed at 8'6". We were able to lower the garage slab six inches lower than the existing house to improve eight foot to 8'6", in large part that has to do with the vehicle access entering the garage from a 10% slope and a 19% slope as you approach. So the additional height was necessary for that reason. Thank you. Oh, excuse me, I would like to request that our client, Ron Beard, be allowed to speak, if that...
As the applicant, sure, if you'd like to know.
Hello, my name is Ron Beard and I am a native Californian. I grew up in Orange County. I went to UCI, moved to Newport Beach when I was 19. Marcia, my wife, and I have lived at 3208 Ocean Boulevard for the last 28 years. We have endured lots of construction, seen lots of changes through the years. We live right next to the Amundson's, so we lived through four and a half years of construction there. We are going through construction right next to us with the basement now. We've worked really hard with the architects and they've worked hard with the city staff to get to where we are. There seems to be some commentary that we haven't made any compromises. And I just want you to know that we've looked very hard at the various options to get to where we are. And basically, we, we were hoping that you will support the project and because otherwise, we pretty much have to just renovate what is there. So thank you very much.
Let me ask the applicant just one question, kind of in relation to that. So the recommend, the conditions, are you good with the conditions that was, was set out by staff?
Yes, I am, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
So I kept my wife speaks?
Sure.
I'm Marcia. This Monday was kind of clear to me that I needed to speak to the neighbors because there were some, people were telling me that maybe garage level would be higher. So I started knocking on the door and, and I talked to a whole bunch of neighbors. And they were in full support of our project. And I was able to gather signatures, about over 25 signatures on my petition. And then I want to, and they were super happy that they can get rid of the pink house. And they're going to, we're going to have the beautiful home. And that would be so much better for the general public, as well as the rest of the neighbors. And one particular neighbor, I want to read you this letter that he wrote me. He wanted to be here for us today, but this is his birthday. And then his parents came and they're celebrating his birthday. And this is a guy, that Deanna and Greg Reposa. They live at 3728 Ocean. And these are the people who actually helped the neighbors across the street at 3725 and 3729 to get the variance up to three feet. And here's a letter that I'm going to read to you. And hopefully that, it kind of makes sense. So here it go. Dear Planning Commission, we are writing to express our support for the Beard Residence, 3625. We have reviewed photos of the plan and think the variance requested is fair. Having lived full-time on Ocean for 25 years, we appreciate the consideration the Beards put into compromising their plan, keeping the garage at current levels and lowering the remainder of the home. In the time that we have lived here, the two homes directly across the street from us 20, I'm sorry, 3729 and 3725 Ocean have both been granted variances that were fair, taking into consideration views while addressing the safety of the entering and exiting the garage. If the garage is not granted the variance in height, it makes it very unsafe and nearly impossible to enter and exit the home. We are in full support of being good neighbors and the Beards have displayed this with their thoughtful plans. And then here is a 3728. And like I said, if I had more time, I can definitely could have gathered a lot more signatures on the petition, but you know, I ran out of time. But so far, I have more than 25 residences who signed my petition, like I said. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you. Well, if you'd like to submit that, you could submit that to staff for your, your letter, yeah. And just wanted to see, our Commissioners, if we have any questions for the applicant before we get questions from the audience?
I'd like to ask the architect a question. I spent some time walking up and down that steep driveway and measuring things. How is a car going to come out of the garage and get up to the street?
Yes, that is a challenge of the site. I can tell you that at portions of the existing driveway, just with the standard changing and being able to meet a different transition from the street to the steepest slope, that it's at 21 and 25% at the steepest areas. So we are reducing that to 19.1. But obviously, it's a big concern of our clients and going beyond the 15% that the city really provides provisions for as their maximum. So it's less than ideal. And that's why we can't move our garage any lower than it is.
Taking away the percentages, describe how it's done. You back out, is there a way to back off and then turn around and go up? So you face out?
No, you would back directly onto Ocean Boulevard.
Okay.
So part of that is lowering the walls so that the sightlines are improved. And landscaping is a big portion of that. But that is the general pattern of development along the bluff there of Ocean Boulevard.
Then I noticed on the site plan, there was a, in the driveway area, there was a carve-out and you had a dotted-in car. Like, if some, if you had a third car that could park there. Is that the intent?
It was wishful thinking, without steep the driveway is. But is, the hope was that it would be enough for a smart, excuse me, a small car or golf cart to be able to take advantage of that. You know, given the extreme slopes and the limited footprint of the garage, excuse me, the driveway. It would not be a compliant guest parking, but that was the intent.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions for the...
Sorry, one more. It seems like a lot of the contention with the neighbors has to do with the, the view from the curb. So it seems like most are saying they want to see it at or below. What went into those discussions with the applicant as far as, you know, coming up to the conclusion that you want the two-car garage to remain the same? I mean, what, were there options that you presented to him to say, "Okay, we can avoid that"? What would the size of the home be? What would the build be like? What would, what, what kind of went into those discussions? Because I think that's what you're going to hear from the opposition in a little while, is that... is that the code says anytime you come back to discuss new builds, it should be at or below curb length, as the LCP even says, we should be protecting those coastal views. So I kind of want to know what went into those discussions with the applicant.
Sure. Yes, it was in part with the applicant, but also with the city. So I, what's unique about the challenge that we're presented as architects is that our zoning has more recently than the previous developments enforced also the, so we have a maximum height from the top of curb, but we also have a sloped grade plane that's relative to grade. And so as you can tell from the massing as it relates to the rear of the property, we're very much confined and reducing that massing to better relate to the 24 and 29 feet slope grade, grade plane from the existing topography. So the garage is really pinched from a development standard and trying to maximize our compliance with the LCP and the zoning code. And so, and David, I don't know if you have our exhibits that we provided, but we performed some studies. As David mentioned, what's also unique is we have a severe cross-slope being at kind of the transition of the bluff. And so what that does is it creates a very warped grade plane and therefore 24 and 29 feet. So in looking at setting the garage further back from the property line to improve drive slopes and potentially height, it would be further out of compliance with the slope grade plane. There's an intersection point where we have a flat max flat and we have a sloped plane. And so that creates a pinch point. So if we do, if we do one versus the other, if we go to a three-car garage, it further brings us out of compliance with the LCP and the zoning code to push that back. And it also, in lowering the home to meet that mean top of curb, we didn't have enough distance to be able to comply with the 20% maximum in pushing it further back from the street. So those were really the obstacles that we encountered was that one option or the other brought us further out of compliance. Part of it is pushing the building massing towards the street because again, the, the roof line and the massing as it gets closer to the bluff is gonna have a larger view impedance than things that are closer to the street. So our strategy in exploring that was to get the garage in a limited two-car footprint as close to the street as we could, to get it down as low as we could and to limit the upper roof footprint that matches the existing to the smallest footprint that we thought was feasible. We have an elevator and a landing space so that should a wheelchair access be needed, there's a mother-in-law who does require that, that we would have enough landing area to enter the home, exit the elevator, and also go down the staircase. There is an atrium that goes above the staircase as it goes down and we've pulled that roof line across that section. But otherwise, the rest of that roof line was our focus and being able to lower that much lower than what the mean top of curb was to three feet and again carving away areas that go all the way to grade.
There really isn't too many options then because I've seen some comments from the public saying if you curl the driveway slope to the, to the right as you come in, that could be an area solved. I've heard people say if you lower your ceilings that are 10 feet on floors one and two to say, you know, nine and a half feet, or even you could move that down and push out the garage. Are these all options that were pursued? Are they all still potentially on the table with that lower the size of the, the footprint of the house? You know, what, what, what goes into that? Because I, I think, you know, it's important to share with the public, you know, how this house needs to be built in order to, you know, cover these variances that, that, that you're seeking. So I think an explanation just to cover that and, you know, you did a good job there. And I'm not being critical on, on any of your work. I think it's fantastic work that you've put into this so far, but I, I want to make sure that the public understands because you're gonna hear from them probably here in a minute.
Sure. Just like to address in particular, we have nine foot six ceiling heights on the level below, so that's correct. But again, it's really our garage slab that is our fixed point, our most constrained point. And the rest of that, you know, we haven't gone to structural engineering, so we don't know exactly how thick our floor thicknesses are gonna need to be. So that could be variable, but ultimately, our height is set from the garage. We cannot exceed building code to 20%. We're at 19.1%. We have to meet these thresholds. So we really, you know, form does follow parking in this instance where we had to design from the top down. So the ceiling heights below being able to take height from there to further lower the home, it would not be compliant because our slopes would become that much more steep. So being at 20% relative maximum slope and 19.1 and trying to lower that three feet, it just wasn't feasible based on the site. From a setback standpoint, the other aspect that maybe hasn't been touched on too much is we also have a sewer easement on the lot, so it gives us a very confined buildable area, which is the reason for the setback relief, which we've taken the building footprint up to one foot one from the property line, but we've reciprocated some of the prior variance requests and modification requests up to 10 feet encroachment so that we can have some eve in roof line and for architectural articulation. So yeah, to answer your question, alternates were explored, but the ceiling height on the lower levels is not relative to our maximum height request because that is driven by our maximum drive slope. And, you know, I welcome that to the city's traffic engineer as far as what the city's standards are. I can certainly attest to building code being 20%. There's other realities of being able to get up from the curb and the flow line of the street and also have an ADA compliant sidewalk at 2% slope. And then it's the transition points backwards from there based on distance and fall that give us our, our general percentage.
Thank you. Any additional questions?
If I could just kind of ask that same question in, in a more simplified way. What, if anything, could you build by right without any variance request or any discretionary approval?
Ten, other than, I, I don't see it as feasible to redevelop the property without a variance request.
Okay, that's a big statement. And then if, as the applicant said, you know, things don't go as you would like them to go here today and you were to revisit and essentially just reface and remodel, you would keep all the same structural integrity and obviously all the same existing variances and just kind of reskin it? I mean, is that the backup plan?
Yeah, ultimately, we have what's there today and it can be remodeled as it has before. And those remodel improvements would just be interior to, to bring up the level of finish, but maintaining the exact same envelope.
And staff, is that, I mean, they'd be kind of non-conforming to today's standards, but they wouldn't have to revisit any of those except for whatever's required by today's building code?
That's correct.
Thank you.
All right, I have a, a technical question that's probably gonna need a little help from staff and from the architect. So I keep hearing the three-foot above top of curb dimension and I never saw a reference to what that actual elevation is, so I calculated it myself and probably incorrectly. But when I started backing into how you got there, so that's one question. The other is that little bit of inconsistency in the plans where that elevation, that final elevation on the architecture on page 107, written page 107, talks about a final elevation of 103.98. And then on page 96, I believe it was 96, it talks about 102.5. So you might not have the answer right now, but I would, if you could take a look into that and let's just make sure that we know what our basis for the datum is so that you end up with where that three feet came from. And then, yes, to further complicate that, the conditions of approval talk about an eight-foot wide sidewalk. That's on page 43. That compounds the problem because now you've widened that space and now you're gonna try to get to 19%. So I'm just questioning the information that I saw on the plans and wanted to know if there could be some clarity there.
Sure. I can confirm that our maximum roof elevation is 103.39 as indicated in the architectural elevations. I'll look into the inconsistency brought up with the 102 number. But as far as the eight-foot sidewalk, we have met, there's a, there's a committee that are working on the Ocean Boulevard master planning and we've met with them personally outside of these efforts. And the driveway width of the sidewalk would remain at four feet, but as you would transition from the drive apron and the driveway, it would go to eight feet. So that would be, because of your point, we had brought that up in the initial comments, that eight feet would just further compound driveway slope. So that's my understanding based off of working hand-to-hand with the city.
Okay, so I want to explore that. Did that mean that four feet of the required eight feet will be at 2% and the other part will be warped a little bit in order to get the transition?
Well, I'll also address that this is something that's in the works and it's not, you know, codified, so it's not required, but our client is amenable to providing that eight-foot sidewalk. But you're correct that there would be a four-foot segment, segment that would be at the 2%, which is our, kind of our standard sidewalk. And the remainder of that, because the eight-foot is proposed to be along the curb, that's being relocated as a part of the master plan. So yes, the remaining 4% between the street and the sidewalk would be the slope portion from the sidewalk to the street for the drive access.
Okay. And then I guess the last part was if there was a, any clarity on what the, the mean top of curb is? I calculated it as 98, but...
Yes, the mean top of curb, as we calculated, which is from our survey, has an average of the top of curb points was 100.39. So three feet above that puts us at our 103.39. There's the flow line and the top of curb, so TC would be the nomenclature on that survey for those, those elevations that we averaged.
Is it from either end? Because there's not, and I'm assuming the PL exists to the projection of the wall on this southern side. It's hard, there isn't a top of curb there, there's one that's outside of it and then there's one inside of it, so...
Sure. Nothing that extended beyond the side property lines, but everything that was provided by our licensed surveyor between those, that, those elevations that were provided is what we averaged.
It looks like I need glasses to read that one, so I can't, unfortunately, I can't come up with that number with or without my glasses. So, all right, thank you.
Comment, Jim?
Um, yeah. Apologize for the interruption, but we've been talking about a master plan and a committee working on something. And, and, and yes, the city is working with a group of residents at the, at the city council and the PBNR commission. There is no master plan at this point in time. There's just been some conversations about making some improvements in the future to enhance the pedestrian experience along Ocean Boulevard, as well as to maybe provide a future plant palette for, for the types of plantings that would be in the public right-of-way there. You know, low, non-invasives, drought tolerant, of course, all of that there. And there's been talk about maybe doing a wider sidewalk in front of this property to enhance the pedestrian experience, but that wouldn't apply to the driveway area. You know, we, we'd like a minimum four-foot wide sidewalk, 2% cross-slope, and that's what we like to see for a sidewalks. And that's what would happen in front of the driveway. So the, the eight-foot, the talk about an eight-foot wide walkway would not be in front of the driveway and therefore wouldn't affect the slope of the driveway and therefore then not affect, you know, where that garage position would be that we've been talking about. Again, we didn't want to make it wider there than to make the house even taller. So, you know, again, we, these are all the considerations staff's been going through and, and looking at it. And, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, the, the average top of curb that we've reviewed on the surveys is 100.39, right? Top of curb?
Correct. That's, yeah, that matches the number that the architect just said and that's the number that we reviewed.
One more point I wanted to make, and I think you've seen it in some of the exhibits, you know, the, the garage and the entry would maintain the same height as the existing house, but the, the westerly 15 feet would be dropped actually another three feet below the top of the curb. So in that, that green graphic that, that David showed, not only is it going lower than the existing house, it's actually going three feet below the top of the curb. And that further enhances the view along that side and reduces the mass. You know, in looking at this project, I walked along Ocean Boulevard looking back at the pink house and go, wow, that does stand out quite prominently. And, and the mass reduction along that side of the house, which is the westerly side of the house, you know, as you walk toward the east along Ocean Boulevard, you know, it's a fairly significant reduction in mass. And as you get closer, it'll enhance the view as you look directly over it. Hence, this is the, the basis that staff used for making the recommendation that we have today.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant from commissioners? Seenan, thank you. We'll go ahead and get, entertain comments from the public here. Let's try to limit to three minutes if we can. So anybody in the audience has question, or comments related to this item, please come on up.
Chair Lowry, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. I don't know who else is gonna speak or, don't want to be repetitive, but speaking of steep driveways, I grew up in a house in the Santa Monica Mountain foothills at the bottom of a canyon. It had a very steep driveway. My childhood memory would be like it's 45 degrees. I'm sure it was not 45 degrees, but it's certainly much deeper than anything you see in any of these pictures. And it did work. And you could even park a car there if you put some blocks under it to make sure it didn't roll back, but not very safe, I'm sure. My comment on this is, of course, as you know, you have to make some findings to grant a variance. With regard to the three-foot, with regard to being below the curb height, I don't see how you can make the findings for that variance, whether you want to or not. First of all, you have to just declare that there's a unique circumstance, in this case that the lot is on the bluff side of Ocean Boulevard, which is so unique that it cannot comply with the rules for lots on the bluff side of Ocean Boulevard. That's kind of circular reasoning. That doesn't make much sense. And then you have to make a finding that it's not a grant of a special privilege to this property owner, which is very hard to make when the immediately adjacent property owner, under the exact same circumstances, was told they had to comply with this, their variance was denied, and they somehow managed to build their garage immediately next to this and keep it below the curb height. And to be sure, there were two later variances that were granted for lots at the far end of Ocean Boulevard near the Corona, but in those, both of those cases, they lowered all of the existing, everything was lower than the existing house height. And that's not the case here. And as to the coastal development permit, you have to make a finding that it's consistent with the intent of the local coastal program, which is to preserve views by enforcing this curb height rule. Clearly, it's not inconsistent with the intent. And in evaluating the coastal development permit, you also have to look at all the alternatives. We have heard from the applicant that there are all alternatives. They can move the garage back. And they have a picture here that looks feasible. It would apparently go over some of the height requirements, but we have no analysis anywhere of this, in the staff report of which, which of these alternatives provides the least impact views. And you need to do that before you could make any finding for a coastal development permit. And if you wanted to be, and of course, as one of the commissioners pointed out, the garage could be moved, so you had a curving driveway, that would, and if you wanted to be really creative, this diagram shows that they've already apparently cut into the bluff. The three houses to the north of this are accessed by a road that's at about 70-foot elevation. Part of this house is lower than that. And if the city wanted to allow them to tunnel under the public right-of-way, the parking could be put at the lower level of the house, eliminate the curb, cut on Ocean Boulevard and have no slope problems. So you would solve everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak to this? Okay.
Hello, everyone. Shannon Aikman, 3208... Shannon Aikman, 3628 Ocean Boulevard. I own the home directly across the street from this project. I'm in opposition of the 3625 Ocean proposal to build at the height in excess of the city building code. I've submitted a letter in more detail for the record. I've lived here since 1971, attended Corona Del Mar High School, I was on the surfing team. In fact, I started it. I love to organize. I'm an active member here in the city of the community. My daughter, Harper, attends Harborview Elementary School, and we live in Corona Del Mar. We don't live out of state. First, this higher build would block everyone's views to homeowners, to residents, locals, and visitors. This should not be allowed. The property next door has built to code to the curb level. Second, there is a city local coastal program that promotes protecting views in open environmental areas for all to enjoy in the community. Opposing this project would be in line with the city's coastal program. Third, the Ocean Boulevard cliffside corridor from Little Corona Beach to Inspiration Point should be consistent in building heights and allow everyone to enjoy the views as they walk by, ride their bikes, drive their cars. We have a building code for that. I ask you to take into consideration the beauty and the views of this view corridor and stand by our building code height limit at curb level. Lastly, allowing this project to build higher than code would set a precedent for future buildings and block views on our beautiful Ocean Boulevard, Ocean Views Harbor and Catalina Sunset Views. Lastly, well, I just want to say, I can't believe I have to be here tonight to speak about protecting views when we have a strong building height codes and local coastal program already in place to protect views. I want to thank you, Planning Commission, staffers, council, view chair. Thank you for taking this into consideration and your hard work. I know it's not easy. I appreciate your work. Please protect Corona Del Mar, Crown of the Sea views, building codes, and coastal program. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional speaker? Come on up.
My name is Stephen Jones. I'm also, family owns a house on Ocean Boulevard, just down the street, few houses down on the other side. First of all, I have a question for the gentleman here. You said you walked by the house. What color you said it was? Pink? Are you sure you walked by that house? It happens to be dark salmon. Do you have a problem? Are you colorblind? Did you see this?
And then you have this comments, not questions for staff.
My other comment is, the gentleman, the architect, they took pictures. Those pictures are distorted. It looks like the Jolly Green Giant was looking down on the house. That is not the view when you walk down that street. I think those pictures should be taken out and removed. That's a joke. It would never stand up in a court of law. It would never stand up in front of any other planning commission. I want to digress a little bit. City of Newport Beach has an app. Has anybody, anybody have it? The pictures you get to see every day of Newport Beach. Anybody look at it? Anybody have a Newport Beach app? There's 95,000 people that have this app. Pictures of Newport Beach. And what's a picture of? It's whales, it's dolphins, it's the surf, it's the wedge. People don't want to look at a bigger garage. I haven't seen a picture of a bigger garage. Have you, who's using the app? Friends of Corona Del Mar? Do they show pictures of bigger garage? No, they show pictures of Corona Del Mar. So it's, the planning commission is this architect that basically wants to take away what people love about this city, what they love about Corona Del Mar. And by the way, that salmon color, it's pretty cool. I also want to go back on a couple of their homes. 3317 Ocean Boulevard. Originally, it was supposed to be a particular height. You know what? They built it up a few feet too high. City came by, this is in the 1970s, said, oh, we're sorry, we didn't hold it to code, and we should have. Too bad. Who's going to hold them to code? Maybe it's three feet, maybe it's four feet. The city has done this again and again. I'd also like to point out 3401 and 3415. Same thing with the chimneys. They basically raised them above the level that they were supposed to be built. So that's basically what I have to say, but I would like to say, I'm big into social media, and you will see, basically, these play against the fact that you want to destroy these people who love to come up and down Ocean Boulevard, take a look at the whales, the dolphins, and everything that Newport Beach has to offer, and that you're willing to destroy this view for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional speakers?
Good evening, I'm Erin McDonald, and I own the residence at 214 Point Seria. I wrote all of you a letter late last night. I was just back in town and heard what was happening today. I first of all, I want to thank you all for the opportunity for all of us to voice our opinion about this request. I've owned the home, my husband and I, for 19 years, and part of the reason that we moved here and love living here, and part of the reason I think a lot of people come from other neighborhoods, is to enjoy the view and the beautiful nature that we have here. And you have an existing code in place, so it was well thought out, and a lot of serious thought was given to those codes, and they're there for a reason, to protect our lifestyle here, to protect our views, and everyone who wants to come here and enjoy it. Now, they have a great architectural firm. I mean, they're a great firm, and they can get very creative when they need to. And I'm sure it might not have everything they want, but that's the difference. It's a want, not a, it's not a need, it's a want. But the need for the rest of the community and for the coastal program that protects our views should be taken first and foremost. They can get creative, they can lower the ceiling heights. Might not be what they want, but they can do it. They can slope the driveway. There are ways to do it, many people have done it here, and I would just really hate to see this precedent set, because I think it's a slippery slope. Once you start doing that, then they're going to point to this project. And we just want to preserve this beautiful neighborhood and village that we live in. We're privileged to live here, and a lot of people enjoy it, and our views of the ocean and the nature are priorities to everyone. I know they are to you, I know they are to all of us, and I wish they would have taken some pictures from directly across the street. It might help the neighbor to the side, because there's their house tears down, but they didn't show you any pictures directly across the street. It already got a variance once, 49 years ago, and now we're going to give it another one. So I think they could just get a little more creative. It's a beautiful home, and they can build it within code. So I support your efforts, and I hope that you will uphold the existing building codes and preserve our coastal views. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Lawrence Tabak, 3431 Ocean Boulevard. Good evening. I'm speaking in support of this project. I really don't understand why members of the public are speaking against this project, because frankly, it improves the public views. I live on Ocean Boulevard, I walk by this house every day. It's a very prominent structure, and it blocks the views. From what I understand, the new plan is going to not only take part of the house and bring it not just to the curb height, but three feet below the curb height. So you've got, the garage is remaining exactly where it is, but the house, 15 feet of the house is basically three feet below the curb, and it's on the west side of the house where the house is very massy and prominent. That's being significantly scaled back, opening up public views over there. So if the variance is not granted, yeah, they could just remodel the house, but the views are worse. So the public is going to basically have worse views, and everybody here is going to be happy that they got a worse view. I really, I'm sorry, but I'm failing to understand that. I've built a house on the bluff as well some years ago, and it's extremely difficult. I can appreciate the architect spending nine months with staff, and staff is supporting the project. I'm sure these guys have explored many different alternatives and looked. It seems to me that one of the biggest issues with this house is the driveway. You have a very, very steep driveway, which is out of compliance, I understand, but it's almost impossible to get a car backed out of there. Now, these guys from the public here are saying, well, just lower the garage by three feet. Well, how do you do that? Do you want to make, how are you going to get a car out of there? It's almost, almost impossible to drive a car out of there now. So they just say, well, just lower your floor heights. Well, this has got nothing to do with the floor heights, as I understand it, because the garage is at a certain level, and that creates a steepness in the driveway. So even if you, even if you reduce the floor heights of the floors below that, so what? Doesn't change your garage. What do you do with this garage? How do you get your cars in and out of there? How do you lower that by three feet? You can't. So from what I can see, this is a hardship situation. It just seems to me, every house along the bluff there has had a variance given. This is not an unusual circumstance, it's not a weird thing that's going on here. This is normal for those bluff houses. They all are very difficult to build. So I support this, I think it's opening up the public views. Again, I don't understand why these guys are opposed to it, they're getting a better view, and I think it's a good compromise. They've worked hard, it seems, with the staff, and the staff is supporting it, and I support it. I just think it's, you know, this is not an unusual circumstance with these properties. One other thing I wanted to comment, some of the guys here mentioned the house, the neighbor's house seemed to comply with that. Well, maybe the neighbor's houses, each of these lots are different, and the way they relate to the road is different in terms of the curb height to the top of house. This house is on a crest. Just because one house was able to comply doesn't mean automatically another house can comply. Anyway, I support the project. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments? If there's none before we...
Good evening, my name is David Greenberg. My parents live at 210 Point Seria. I too grew up in Corona Del Mar. I knew the Alleghards that lived in that house previously. He drove a nice Porsche, real low to the ground, had no problem getting out of the driveway. So I don't know if there's any bias concerned about the driveway slope, possibly, but there was no issue when there was that Porsche going up and down. Now, we have the most to lose as far as this three-foot variance. Granted, we moved in after the initial variance, but if this variance was not, new variance was not allowed, our ocean views would improve greatly. So I'm opposed to this variance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm David's mom, Mary Greenberg, and we moved to Corona Del Mar in 1980, raising five children and now 10 grandchildren. So my husband and I, of course, oppose this, because like David said, we are losing, if this goes up any higher, we lose the beautiful view of the ocean and the harbor from our house. We live straight up the street from this house. It's Point Seria. I think a lot of you know where that is. And I loved Eric Wygand's idea about the curving of the driveway, and architects, and this one sounds very capable, they do beautiful things, anything you want, making that driveway wider, because from the picture that I see here, it already looks quite wide, goes across the whole front of that garage, and if you remove the brick address right in the middle, you've got a huge amount of leverage there for curving and making it a nice slope and still staying within code. I thank you very much for listening to me and for being here tonight for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Chair Lowry and commissioners, my name is Kenneth Pratt. My wife and I are homeowners at 3620 Ocean Boulevard with our two children, ages two and four. Unfortunately, my family could not be here tonight because this meeting's at the same time as my kids' dinner and bath time. Those of you with young kids understand, you don't mess with the two-year-old's bath time, at least not if you want to avoid the repercussions. I've been a member of this community for 30 years. I grew up here, my family grew up here, my grandmother's here, this is home. My first summer job was selling lemonade and fruit punch down at the corner of Point Seria and Ocean. I went to Harborview Elementary, and from then on, I went to CDM where I played football as a sea king. I hope you've all had an opportunity to read the letter I submitted. It goes into many of the technical details of our opposition to not just a single variance, but the four variances rather, that are being requested for this project. Instead of reiterating my letter as to why I believe each one of the four variances do not merit a unnecessary hardship exception, I want to speak to you tonight as a neighbor and concerned member of our community. After having now spoken to many members of staff at the city of Newport Beach, I'm left with the impression that staff is doing the best they can under these trying and difficult circumstances that the applicants have placed them in. This project was brought to my attention by my neighbors, and it was only after my neighbors and I proactively reached out to the Beards and their consultants that they agreed to meet with us and share their plans. We have now met with the Beards several times at this point, and despite our best efforts to find a solution to protect the neighborhood and preserve the bulk of their plans, the Beards are completely unwilling to compromise and listen to reason. For instance, they do not offer and are unwilling to increase the slope of the driveway, similar to next door, at a 20.5% slope driveway. They're unwilling to reduce the ceiling height. In fact, when asked about a simple ceiling height reduction in the garage to a reasonable eight feet, they claimed it would make them claustrophobic. They are unwilling to shift the garage placement, which could lower the overall height of the home. Instead, the Beards are insisting on building a home that blocks the public coastal views and violates the city's local coastal program. In the spirit of cooperation and neighborhood cohesion, I would ask the planning commission, at a minimum, to continue this discussion to the next meeting and give the Beards one last opportunity to do the right thing. This continuance would allow the Beards to revisit their plans and discuss meaningful solutions. The height of the home could be reduced to at or below the curb height by incorporating just a few of the following design features into the plans, that I could think of offhand, some of which I mentioned previously. Lowering the interior ceiling heights and the garage ceiling height. Lowering the interior ceiling heights and the garage ceiling height. Increasing the slope of the driveway. Shifting the garage slightly away from Ocean Boulevard, which allows the driveway to be elongated, the slope reduced, and the home lowered. Reducing the oversized garage parking spaces to match the sizes provided in the building code. And possibly reducing the number of stories of the home from four to three. A short continuance now could lead to a better project and long-term benefits for our community for the future generations to come. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any other public comments? There's no one else. Would the applicant like to come and have any response before we close? Public comments to any of the comments that were brought up by the public?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everyone for their participation. I think that's part of why it's a beautiful community. People have a right to be heard. You know, I think it would be great to hear from the traffic engineer just to validate some of the claims as far as pushing the garage lower. What I can tell you is that the topography gets steeper as you go to the west of the property. So widening a driveway or curving in or angling it would actually create a steeper drive slope to get in there. So the most efficient way is to come in at the side of the property that we have in a straight shot. Otherwise, the slope gets steeper. So ultimately, we do not have the option to lower the house three feet. The garage ceiling is at eight foot six. But we feel that's warranted because of the steep sloping driveway and the access into the garage. At a 10.9% slope entering the garage, a seven-foot garage or a seven-foot-six garage door would be a challenge. And given the weight of the compromise of a 23-foot deep footprint that's at the max three-foot height and everything behind that being so substantially lower, I believe that the views are significantly improved in that respect as well. If you consider an alternate where the existing roof line was lowered to the mean top of curb in its exact form, exact footprint today, I believe that that would be a more obstructive view and a more obstructive alternate to the public than what we've proposed today. The reason for that being that we've gone below the code requirement of the mean top of curb, more than three feet below the top of curb. The other aspect is as you get to the center massing of the home, we've created negative space. Now, it's oftentimes difficult to visualize that negative carving out. But everything we've done is carving out and taking away from the existing envelope. And so we don't have a flat roof that spans from the street to the bluff. We have terraced everything down. We have opened up spaces at the center of the home to create a thoughtful design that has improved views substantially beyond what's required. So I just ask that they be taken into consideration as you move forward and we're available for any further questions that you might have.
Thank you. Yes. One question here.
You bring up a question for me. On page 55, a cross-section showing that driveway in the garage. What do you, you, tell me again, for the record, what's the driveway percentage?
So as you enter from the street, it varies because we have to address the sidewalk. And we have 11% differentials as we transition to a more steeply slope. So there's a 33, it's approximately 33, 33 feet where we're at 19.1% drive slope.
Right, shows 18% here, not counting the drop of 13% behind the sidewalk. Then it drifts down to 10%, then you have your finished floor of the garage.
There is some variation as you go through the width of the driveway. So that is that center section. So our civil engineer, if you look at the C2 sheet, that is our grading plan. But you're right that the street has a slope to it. It's not a flat elevation. So I am referencing that steepest section, which is at the center of our driveway.
Oops, sorry. All right. I have C2 out here and I'm trying to get the comparison right now.
Sure. Do you see the 33.3 feet? That's right above that circular one with the arrows on either side, the leaders?
Yes.
If you go north of that on plan, above Contour 97, you'll see a 19.1%.
Yes.
So that is our, at 33 feet, that's our greatest climb, as you can imagine, to be at that steepest slope for that length. We have to have a minimum of a five-foot width increment to change the slope. Otherwise, if you came into the garage at a 19% to a zero slope, it would bottom out. And so that last length at five feet is at a 10.5% before we go to a flat garage.
All right. Come back. Overlay for us. What exists today? Because I walked down that three times, finally went up the stairs. It's so steep.
Correct. If you look to the upper left of that 19.1%, that is what's proposed. You'll see in parentheses, the 21% and shortly thereafter, 25%.
25, yes.
So that's what exists today. It doesn't have the same Public Works standards of those transitions that occur at a minimum of five feet of length. And so that last segment there is steeper than the 19%.
All right, so the codes have changed since they built what's there today. And this reflects current code?
Yes, 20% is our building code and the city standard is 15%. So only under special circumstances will the city sign off on a driveway steeper than 15%. I can tell you that the adjacent property at 3631 Ocean Boulevard was able to go to a 20% max slope and meet their height requirement. Whereas we're already essentially at a 20% slope at three feet above mean top of curb. So it is unique to each situation on the bluff. And again, what's unique to our property versus the other bluff property is this cross slope. As David pointed out, there's a 40-foot differential from basically our driveway section of the property to the low corner. And so that relates, that drop-off as you go to the lower terraced homes, that does absolutely create a steep dropping slope for any drive condition. Part of the reason why if we went three-car garage, which is our requirement for this property, obviously, we would have a hard time providing that 15 feet of open space. But we'd also have another steep section and even wider driveway to contend with this severe drop in grade.
All right, thank you for that answer. All right. There's no further questions? Appreciate that. Staff, before we close public comments, anything you'd like to add on the record?
The only thing I wanted to kind of indicate, there was a comment here about how we hold these projects to these plans. And one of the things that we do on our building plans for any project that has a variance is the standard operating procedure. We have a height certification requirement that's put on those plans. So the elevations that we see with those final plans, there's a surveyor that goes out into the field and surveys it to ensure that the framing and the top of the roof, it all fits within that plan. And so there was an indication that somebody built it incorrectly. And how can we stop that? And that's our practice. And if they build it incorrectly, they're going to have to modify it and change it back to this plan. Because, you know, obviously, the height is of significant concern and we won't even let it go an inch above. So they'll have to modify it. So anyway, that's our basic practice. So that's my only comment.
Right. Wait. Yes.
Chair. Jim, let's follow up on that. Height of the existing garage and structure, that wide home is no higher than what they're proposing for the garage area. I know on the, looking at it on the right-hand side, it drops down and drops down, which is good for views. Am I correct at hearing that? Their garage today is the same as this?
Yes.
Okay.
The overall height of that portion of the building is the same height as the existing structure.
And to the right side? Is that, that's the east side, right?
The right side will be the west side. It drops six feet from existing.
Six and more as it terraces down the hill?
Yes, it does.
Thank you.
All right. Other questions up here? We'll go ahead and close the public comments section. And we'll move it up here to the Commissioners and for our discussion and possible motion. Anybody who would like to... Sarah?
Just a question for staff. Did you study what the slope of the driveway would need to be if you were to bring the garage down three feet?
Well, there was the feasibility study that was done, which is, I think, on hand page 55. So that shows a setback. So essentially, you would have to have the setback at essentially the 18% grade to drop it down to the curb level. And that's the only way I could see in this feasibility study is to how you could bring it down to that level. With the, without the setback, you really can't do a whole lot in terms of the grade of the driveway. Next door had a 20%. We rarely go to anything like that. We've done recently maybe some 18%. I'm comfortable with 19 in these Ocean Boulevard properties. But no, we haven't looked at anything further than just looking at their feasibility.
So Tony, obviously, it's gotten this far. It's gotten your blessing. This works?
With the 19% grade? Yes, I'm comfortable with 19%. We've done recently some 18% projects and they work.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Laurie?
I'm still sort of grappling with how this lot differs from the others. And we keep dancing around the same question, which to me comes down to, is this lot buildable in any other way other than what the applicant has proposed in terms of this height variance? Because that seems to be the one that everybody's most focused on. I'm not really comfortable with like a finite answer. I know we heard from the applicant and their position is that there is no viable alternative. But is that something that staff would agree with?
Yes, Vice Chair Kleiman. Staff did look at other alternatives of the, with the architects. And in order to build it under, to be at the curb height, again, the issue that's been brought up of the slope and is the balance of the relationship of how steep do you want? Can we, would we allow this slope to be? If you lower the garage, obviously, the slope's going to increase more. So that was one of the things we've looked at. How can you, how can you suppress, depress it even more? And based on the discussions with Public Works, we've worked with Tony's team for the last six months on it. They came up with 19.1% as the appropriate. In terms of, in terms of height from the grade below, it's really difficult since the topography here slopes not just from front to back, but side to side. And as I pointed out, there's a 40-foot drop. In order to have livable area that's continuous, at least, we reviewed with the architect and, you know, without a variance to exceed the flat height, it wouldn't really be possible to have some continuous livable area that spans across the frontage. And finally, just the front setback. I believe that since the applicant can't build towards the back and capture any square footage, that 10-foot front encroachment was really vital to, you know, get the necessary square footage because there's nowhere else to capture that. So if you can't move it back towards the bluff. So we considered any options to get captured square footage elsewhere. We reviewed that with the architect and there's not really any alternatives to get additional area, livable area elsewhere towards the back.
So there are feasible alternatives, but not without losing a substantial amount of square footage, which obviously reduces property value. And I'm sure is not what the applicant would want to see. But I'm trying to focus on this lot in comparison to or relative to the other nine lots of these 10 that have been grouped together, especially in this code section or this ordinance that Mr. Moser pointed out in his comment letter that seems to have been reviewed multiple times over the years, very intentionally. So that ordinance addresses these lots specifically and the fact that the intention was to not exceed this level. So is this lot unique even within this uniqueness of those 10 lots, if that makes sense?
Claire, will you pull up the PowerPoint? So I'm just bringing up the image again, just so you have it in front of you. Subject property is in a unique place. And I think I previously stated that it's at that transition of the bluff. So if you see, the houses to the right of the subject property really kind of stay generally, there's no dramatic increase or decrease, you know, from subject property going right of the photo. But when you go left, there's a huge drop. So this is the first house on that transition. And this one, the bluff has to gradually go down. But in this case, it's quite a quick drop. The three houses to the left, they have their own driveway entrance and it's much lower. So it's, the topography is special on this specific lot, even though all 10 do have hardships. Staff reviewed this one. This one is the beginning of the transition of the bluff. And that's why we believe that there is a special hardship here.
And if I can just add to that, you know, typically, when we have a variance, we're looking often at just rectangular blocks, for the most part, when we have houses, at least in my neighborhood. You can see from the photo here that there are a lot of unique features. The bluff's different in front of each different home. Ocean Boulevard curves. And so while 10 of these homes receive some form of a variance, there are unique features to each home that if the fact finding body thinks that there's support for variance, then I think it would be appropriate here.
Thank you.
So in the future, every home along this edge, when it's redeveloped, will need a variance in order for it to be built. I mean, that's what we're saying here because...
Commissioner Rosina, I don't think that's necessarily in evidence here today. Most of the homes have gone through this process in some respects. Some are the downslope variance, 24 feet to grade. Some are the top of the curb. Many have gone into the front yard setback. That's one way to help, you know, keep the house from going further down the bluff, which, you know, up until a couple of years ago, there was that prospect. But in the last decade, those standards have changed. There is also the sewer line that kind of runs through this house at a diagonal. So coming into the setback is something that helps minimize the alteration of the bluff. And the house is already eight foot into the 10-foot setback. You know, that being said, if you do push that garage further away from the bluff, you know, even as shown on exhibit 55 or page 55, you know, if it's, the further away it is from the street, the longer the driveway is and the grade starts to drop a little bit. And then the house potentially could actually go down a little bit. And I'm looking at the example on handwritten page 55. And, you know, it does show an 18% slope driveway. And it shows a compliant garage ostensibly at the top of the curb, meeting the standard. That might warrant a little additional review. You know, staff looked at this in a variety of different ways. How can we minimize all of the different variances? As you can see, there's a lot of different moving parts to this project. You know, we even considered, let's do a two-car garage rather than a three-car garage to help reduce the overall width of the structure. And so, you know, this is a bit of a compromise. You know, I think if you look at this from the perspective of any new house must comply and therefore, you know, nothing can go above the top of the curb, you know, we're also looking at it from the perspective of, well, there's an existing home there. And then the applicant has the absolute right to, you know, remodel that home and stay within that footprint. And while the applicant has indicated they might do that, there may be alternatives that might help further improve the view beyond what the current design affords. You know, again, staff has supported the application because it does substantially, in our mind, improve the view as you walk along Ocean Boulevard.
Yeah, I mean, to be clear, the new plan does not encroach into the view as much as the existing plan. That's a, I think that's clear. What is interesting to me is just how do you get creative to push out that remaining piece down below it? And you're right, I've been sitting here with page 55 open almost this whole time, trying to figure it out. And it's really just the setback. And, you know, the bottom portion, it's all linear instead of maybe there's some, something that could be done there. And I'm just wondering if that setback on that top floor could be utilized to get the slope to work and to still push it down, as page 55 shows that you can do. slope to work and to still push it down, as page fifty-five shows that you can do, while keeping the lower sections in the setback as drawn, so that that portion of the house is shifted out. And I guess, you know, the reasoning behind it is because of this slope max ridge height. So...
Peter Jevra?
Jim, put up page fifty-five, please. It's a cross-section that we're all, I started on and everybody's looking at.
We don't have the graphic, Commissioner, on PowerPoint.
You don't? Okay. I'm looking at it, and others have it. If you move that blue rectangle, which is the garage, toward the ocean, even five feet, you're not going to, it's the same height. We're not changing that. That is the height of that garage, as low as it can be. You're shifting it over. Granted, you could lower the grade on the driveway a little bit, but that doesn't help anything. It's the same viewpoint, from my perspective.
And maybe I'm wrong, but I think that the difference is, is they're showing it, the house completely outside the front setback, where the house is that, that's the feasibility study, is showing it outside of the setback as opposed to what it truly is, the setback is within the setback.
But Mr. Rosin, if you slide that toward the ocean, the width of your finger, it's not going to change the height of it at all. You're sitting on the roof of the sec, on the lower floor, in the lower floor below that.
Yeah, and there's a mechanical area just below that. But you're right, as you extend out over into the living space, it would impact that, for lack of a better term, second floor. Talking about lowering it. It shows that you can do it here. That's why I was questioning it.
Derek Jevra?
I'm going to come at this at just a different angle. This commission is blessed with having guys that are experts in this field that relate to a lot of this. I'm more of an expert on maybe understanding how the community feels on some of these things. And we've dealt with variances before that have been controversial in nature, and they've been appealed to the City Council, and they've been appealed to the Coastal Commission. And at this particular location, they don't have to go to the council for discussion. If we approve this tonight, they can go straight to the Coastal Commission. And I'm sure all these guys over here are probably wanting that to not happen, because when it goes to Coastal, it usually doesn't come out. So I want to make sure that the beards have, you know, looked at this as best as they can and tried as hard as they can to work with the community on this. I know Mr. Pratt, I've spoke with, with some of the folks in that area. They think that there could be more to compromise. They think that there's something to work with. I'm afraid that this either goes to council, which, if you remember the Reed variance, I don't know how many of you commissioners were on during that time, but it pitted a community against each other, and there was nothing but fighting. They still are fighting. That project is not anywhere near to completion, but I hear it from residents all the time that how we approved that, and it got approved through council on the appeal. That couldn't go to Coastal, but this can. There's a China Code project that was, a few of us were on as well, that has never come out of Coastal. So I want the applicant to recognize that the community, I think, and based on all these letters I received, that's probably not the accurate amount that are here tonight, but there will be some type of appeal. Now, is that our decision to determine that? No, but you have to recognize that I don't think our council members want to spend hours on an appeal on something that's going to cause more controversy than it's needed. So I just want to make sure we take a step back and look at it from that sense, because historically, from my perspective, if you're impacting the coastal view, I vote against them, and I have in my record up here. I don't know how other commissioners will vote tonight, but if there's a chance for a continuance to work with the neighbors, to me, it seems that it's just the curb issue. It's the other variances, you're asking for four variances. I don't see it, at least in my conversations with the neighbors, that they're that upset about a two-car garage, that they're upset about coming up on the encroachment, that they're upset on those other items. It's mostly just how it appeals from the LCP standpoint, and it says that if you can go smaller, go smaller. So if you're at the curb level, they want to see it there or lower. Again, experts, not an expert, but if you can work with something, you may be interested in getting a better house that stands up to Coastal or an appeal versus just doing the remodel. I know you can do just a remodel and keep it the same and, you know, throw it back to the residents, say, well, you had a chance to have improvements in this view corridor, but you had to accept this garage height. If that doesn't happen, you know, maybe you just want to do a remodel. But I'm just looking for a solution that perhaps can be met with the community. I don't know if a continuance would even do that, but I want to give it every opportunity because once you get out of here, if you're approved, you can skip council, you can go straight to Coastal, and you could be held up in there for life. So I'm just trying to be a pragmatic, look at it and see it from that perspective. So that's my two cents.
As a planning commissioner, I think our responsibility is to call balls and strikes. We have to look at what's black and white and not really go down the road with all the other emotion that's surrounded by it. I see this lot as atypical. It's got a forty-foot slope, it's side to side, it's front to back, it's on a cliff. I feel like the applicant's done a pretty good job in trying to work with staff for the last nine months to try to minimize the view impact. I think that, you know, no one's perfect, but in terms of what we've seen come in front of us before for these variances and what we've approved and the reasons behind it in terms of atypical nature, special hardships, this qualifies, in my opinion, and I'd be supportive of this project.
Somebody down there? I was going to give a comment, but if you, if you have questions... Yeah, I'm just surprised that Commissioner Wagen is... We're supposed to look at this like we just heard, balls and strikes. What's in front of us, not what could happen. And we don't encourage people to go out and say, guess what? You can also sue somebody. We don't do that. We're planners. We're supposed to be looking at the documents in front of us, and the engineering, and the conditions of a property. We have all looked at houses on Jasmine, Larkspur, Point Setti, that wanted to get that little higher view for that third-floor deck, and the neighbors didn't like it, but some of you who are out here own those houses, and we have to make a decision. Is that, because that lot is a little bit lower than the next one, should we give them some help? And we have to make that call. This is no different than that. I support the project.
I just give you my comments of it, and I understand, you know, Ocean Boulevard's a beautiful boulevard. We all in Newport enjoy the view, and it's definitely something special. And if they were coming in for a variance of four feet or five feet or something, you know, above what is there now, I would definitely, probably not be in favor of that. But David, could you bring up the one slide that shows all the variances on that Ocean Boulevard? I think one had a setback, another one had height, that one slide? It was like S and an H. Yeah. So I look at that, and I'm like, wow, everyone there has a variance, even the ones that were lower from the curb. And as, you know, I agree with my colleagues here, we're here to call balls and strikes. And I look at the variance findings, and staff did a great job and backed up all of their findings pretty well. And I specifically, for the variance findings on page seven, I'm, look at letter B. Strict compliance with zoning code requirements would deprive the subject property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under an identical zoning classification. So I look at all of this, and I see all of these different variances, and so they come here with what I think of a project that you're replacing like with like in terms of height, less volume, a beautiful home, and, you know, you picked the wrong straw, so you don't get to be like everyone else. So I mean, I look at that, backed up with the findings that staff did, you know, outside of all the other ones, even extra strong, that you just, you, it's very, very obvious that everyone else is enjoying the variance or of some sort here. And just the, you know, oddity of these lots, it just, it's hard to build, and, you know, you're just replacing height alike with alike with a more beautiful building, less volume. I just, I don't see it. So I'm here to support the project as well. Actually, I'd like to move the, move the agenda item number three. Let me go back to all the recommendations, one through four recommendations for agenda item number three here.
Make a motion. I'll second that motion. I'll make a substitute motion that we continue the item and let the residents and the applicant get a chance to prevent an appeal that goes to the Coastal Commission or the City Council.
Is it possible to open the public hearing just to ask the applicant if they want to go ahead and move forward with a vote tonight, or if they would be interested in a continuance based on Commissioner Wagen's comments?
You do have a motion and a second on the floor, and so...
If there's a second on the continuance, then we'll open it up for just their comments.
The reason is, I just think compromise is always better than an appeal, so just...
Is there a sec?
Keep that mindful.
Is there a second?
I understand. I was just saying that that's up to the applicant, not to us, but we'll move forward.
Seeing there's not a second, dies?
I didn't hear it.
Yeah, I didn't either, so, all right. So we're back to the original motion? I want to add one more thing. I went out there today again and took a tape measure, big tape measure. There are more obstructions from the shrubs that go from three foot six to six foot six along this bluff area in front of people's houses. To me, that's worse than this house, which is not going to be any higher than it is today. So I think that maybe some hedge clipping might help some of these views. Thank you. Let's go ahead and move with the vote, please.
The motion carries six, one, with Commissioner Wagen voting no.
Right, congratulations. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to item number four. Residences at thirteen hundred Bristol, PA twenty-one dash one sixty-one.
Chair, I need to recuse myself from this item. My organization leases office, the office property where this company resides, and so that would be a conflict.
And also, I, before we move on this, let me, the commission like to take a five-minute break before we start, since we were going here for a couple hours? Yeah, all right. I guess we're going to take a five-minute break here really quick, so are you guys good? Do you want to keep going? Okay, let's just keep going. All right. We'll keep going, so we'll go ahead and start here with item number four. Residents at thirteen hundred Bristol. And we will start, is it Chelsea? I think Chelsea is going to...
Chair Laurie, we just need a few minutes for the applicant to go ahead and set up, so if we just give it a few minutes.
Oh, okay. Maybe we'll take, okay, guys, we'll take three to four, we'll take four, three minutes, and we'll get to eight fifteen. How about that? Okay. Been here at eight sixteen, and we are going with Chelsea. If you want to go ahead and start us off here?
Yes, thank you, commissioners. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. Chelsea Craigor with the Planning Division. The project that you have before you is the residences at thirteen hundred Bristol Street, which have, oop, I knocked with my computer. I'm sorry. Yeah. Sorry. So the residence is at thirteen hundred Bristol Street, which is, of course, located at thirteen hundred North Bristol Street. The project consists of one hundred and ninety-three apartments, so these are rental units, a three hundred and forty-six space parking garage. The building is six stories above grade, which is five stories of residential, residential uses, one level of on-grade parking, and two levels of below-grade parking. So five levels of residential, three levels of parking, six levels fully above grade, for a total height of seventy-eight feet of overall building height on a building site that's just under two acres. Here's our vicinity map to get a situated. Red star, of course, is the project site. It's currently developed with an office building. You see some of our major streets nearby. We're on Bristol. Over on the right-hand side, we have Jamboree Road, and that's our city boundary. On the left, we have another city boundary of Campus Drive. Here I have the project site shown in a green star, and it's shown in the MU-H2 land use designation. That's a mixed-use horizontal land use designation, and this map shows some of those land use designations up in the airport area. The MU-H2 designation is intended to have a mix of uses, residential among some non-residential uses, and up to twenty-two hundred multifamily residential units, of which these hundred and ninety-three would be a part. So those hundred and ninety-three units, let's break down where that, where that number came from. The seven, first, we start with seventy-seven base units. That number is based on the existing development, so thirty-three, excuse me, thirty-three thousand two hundred and ninety-two square foot office existing at the site currently. That translates into seventy-seven units based on trip neutrality. On top of that, the project is including a density bonus consistent with density bonus state law. So that's thirty-nine additional units, which represents fifty percent of the base seventy-seven. In addition to that, the project is proposing seventy-seven units be transferred from Uptown Newport Phase One, so unbuilt units from Uptown Newport being transferred over to this project for a total of one hundred and ninety-three, or a total density of ninety-eight dwelling units per acre. Some of the project details, I mentioned, it's just under two-acre site, one hundred and ninety-three units, it's a mix of studios, one and two-bedroom units. Twenty-four of those units would be affordable, and the remaining one sixty-nine would be market rate. I have the affordable unit mix up there as well. The building is generally rectangular shaped, and it's a podium-style development. So here we have our first-level floor plan, which is also functioning as our site plan. I'm going to use my mouse to point at some things. So of course, on the bottom, we have Bristol. On the left, we have Spruce. There are driveway entries on both of those, on both of those roads, so one on Bristol and one on Spruce, and they are connected by this road that goes around the back of the building. That road does allow for two-way traffic and allows for fire access. There are also two entries to the garage, so one is closer to Bristol here, and one is closer to Spruce over here. So two entries. Some of the other things we see here are some of the project amenities, such as this dog spa. On the right-hand side, this green area is a dog park or a dog relief area. Over here on the left-hand side, leasing business center. I also want to draw attention to this cutout here. This is on Spruce Avenue, and this would be an area to allow for things like drop-off pickup, Uber, Lyft, and things like that. So it would be a cutout in the public right-of-way that would allow for those types of activities. Some of the amenities that the project is proposing, and I won't get into too much detail because I believe the applicant will, things like a pool and spa courtyard on the second level, along with a club room and a fitness center, a dog wash room and the dog park area that I mentioned in the previous slide, a roof terrace, which is on the top level six, and small private balconies for most of the units. The applications required for this project are a major site development review to review the residential use, the transfer of development rights, those seventy-seven units I've mentioned, an affordable housing implementation plan, that's consistent with the density bonus law, and a traffic study due to the increase in number of trips. But first, let's look at that major site development review. The site development review looks at consistency with the zoning code. In this case, the project is located within the Newport Place Play and Community, specifically within a residential overlay. The overlay is required by the housing element. It provides zoning, eliminates some constraints to allow residential uses. It also identifies some key standards, which I have listed here, which provide some standards for residential uses within Newport Place. Here we have the transfer of development rights. So as I mentioned, it's coming from Uptown Newport Phase One, so that's highlighted in red on the right-hand side. That's our donor site, and then our left-hand box, that's our receiver site, thirteen hundred Bristol. Seventy-seven units would be coming from Uptown Newport Phase One over to thirteen hundred Bristol. There are specific findings that are required to approve a traffic, or excuse me, to approve a transfer of development rights, and those findings are supported by the traffic phasing ordinance study that was done, and I'll mention a little bit more, I'll mention more in a little bit. I do want to mention that these units that are coming from Uptown Newport going over to thirteen hundred Bristol are subject to a development agreement from Uptown Newport. The Uptown Newport DA has fees associated with it, including park-in-look fees and public benefit fees. Those fees will still apply to those seventy-seven units when, if and when permits are issued for... Those fees will still apply to those 77 units when, if, and when permits are issued for those units to be built. The Affordable Housing Implementation Plan, this is for those affordable units. So 24 units, which represents 30% of the base units, would be allocated as affordable. 12 of them would be for low income, and 12 would be for very low income. In return, the project is entitled to a 50% increase in base units. So that 50% is based on the original 77 base units, so there's a 39, 39 units associated with that density bonus. Also consistent with state density bonus law, the project is entitled to request waivers of development standards. I've listed those here, along with what the project is proposing and what the development standard is. I want to mention that the application of some of these standards could physically preclude the development of affordable housing, and in order to not grant these waivers, there would need to be evidence that the approval of these waivers would create a significant health and safety impact. So these waivers are intended to incentivize development of affordable housing. On incentives, these are two incentives that the applicant has also requested. This is also consistent with state law. State law allows the applicant to request up to three financial incentives for the development of affordable housing. In this case, they are requesting two. One of them is an affordable unit mix, and I have a chart there for you to look at, and second is the value of the half-acre parkland in loo fee payment. Once again, this does not waive any of the fees that are associated with the transferred units. The fees associated with the Uptown DA are not proposed to be waived as a part of this incentive. So we are familiar with the Traffic Phasing Ordinance, our TPO. So this project did have a traffic study that was prepared in accordance with our TPO. It was prepared by the Gandini Group. It looked at some intersections in Newport Beach and Irvine. It showed a net increase in trips of 726 daily trips, and there were no significant impacts identified. The project is subject to CEQA, and for this project, an addendum to the EIR for the general plan was prepared. It was prepared by Kim Lee Horn, and there were no new impacts identified. I have this slide up here to show you a proposed change to conditions of approval. Condition of approval number 39 is from our fire department, and the one at the top of the slide shown in strikeout is the one that you'll see in your packet in front of you. The one below is the one that staff is recommending that condition be changed to. It provides some flexibility to the applicant in the early stages of construction while still maintaining fire safety. This proposed condition, this revised condition, has been okayed by our fire marshal. To sum things up, the project is consistent with the general plan, with neighborhood compatibility. It provides for connected and walkable streets, provides sufficient parking. Sustainability is built into the design. It's consistent with the zoning of the residential overlay, and it's also consistent with state density bonus law. That being said, the recommended action is to conduct a public hearing, approve the EIR, and adopt a resolution recommending project approval to the City Council. Anticipated City Council date for this project is March 22nd. This concludes my presentation. We have the Persern Group here with a presentation of their own and a materials board that you guys can take a look at. We also have Dina Privet here from Kim Lee Horn, who prepared the environmental document. We also have a representative from the Gandini Group here, who prepared the traffic study, and of course, I am also available for questions.
Take it up here for some staff questions. Actually, I have one off the bat here. I don't think, since I've been on the commission, we've had a major site development review. When we do that, does that, will we see other parts of the project again, like a map or anything like that, or is this kind of all in one, and once that's approved, it's off the races?
It would be all in one. There is no additional parcel map or anything like that.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
Chelsea. Guest parking, is it designated by the G on the floor plan of the first-level parking? Or is there a summary of how many?
The guest parking, we have it shown kind of here. I don't see that the individual spaces are identified on the plan that I have. I know the applicant has...
I see RV in R, EV in R, then a bunch of Gs. I don't know what the, I thought that's a lot of guest parking, but I could be wrong.
I'm not sure that I see the Gs. It might just be the exhibit that I'm looking at, where I don't see it, but I'm sure the applicant has more detailed floor plans, and they can speak to that.
All right. On the very low and low, how is the rent adjusted? Annually, a certain percent? Are they fixed? I don't know. I mean, versus market rate?
The rates are adjusted annually by the County of Orange.
Even the low, very low?
Yes.
But the other market rate is...
It's just market rate.
Floats, okay. Is it the same ownership as Uptown Newport?
The same developer as the One Uptown project, yes.
All right. Last question. Where'd the 77 units come out of, which building that we approved?
These are unbuilt units from Phase 1 of Uptown Newport. So One Uptown is that apartment project that you see over at Uptown Phase 1. There are other undeveloped portions of Phase 1, some that are currently under construction, and another lot that hasn't been fully entitled yet. So the 77 comes out of potential density at those sites.
So will we review that as the planning commission, that we, because that was a specific plan, certain units, certain places, certain height, density, et cetera? Are we going to have a chance to see where that reduction came from?
Commissioner Kanning, I'll take a crack at that one. The answer is actually no. So the Uptown Newport set up a scenario where there was a master site development review that the planning commission reviewed and approved, and then the individual buildings that were constructed, including the park, go to the community development director. So the 77 units that are not being built, you know, right now, we're looking at a 30-unit project and a 60-unit project, and they're condominiums, and they're far less dense than would have otherwise been allowed by the planned community text. So we're not changing the planned community text at all. The applicant there, the shop-off group, is building to a lesser density at that site, and that frees up some units that could be transferred, and those are the units being moved here.
Thank you.
No question mark, it looks like, okay.
Just a quick question on parking. We could probably walk through some of the nuances of the parking, but the condition of approval talks about the minimum that was allowed and not what was being proposed. So condition five on page 56 talks about 233 will be provided, but I read that 346 were being proposed. So a little clarity on that when the time comes, I suppose.
Any questions? All right. If none, then we'll start with ex parte communication and...
None?
None.
I had some text correspondence with the applicant.
None for me. I had with the applicant.
I too spoke with the applicant, discussing the merits of the project.
We'll go ahead and open the public meeting, and I'd like to bring up the applicant, if they'd like to...
Good evening, Chair Lowry, Vice Chair Kleiman, and Commissioners. My name is Kent Persern. I'm the President and CEO of the applicant, the Persern Group. Thank you for the opportunity to present our proposed project at 1300 Bristol this evening. We have a brief project overview for you to be presented by Amanda Tropiani, Principal of De novo Planning, Erwin Yao, Principal of TCA Architects, and Matt Jackson, VP at MJS Landscape Architects. This is the same, substantially the same, group of consultants that we used at One Uptown Newport. Our objective is to create another mixed-income project combining the highest standards of luxury with much-needed affordable housing. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Amanda. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. We are excited to share some additional project specifics with you as part of our presentation. We will keep this focused on new information. Your staff did a wonderful job of sharing some of those project particulars, but we wanted to dive a little bit deeper into some of the design ideas and really highlight some of the unique architectural amenities and landscape features. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and begin a brief presentation that's going to just introduce our project team. We have our technical experts here to answer any questions you may have. A bit more information about the project applicant or the project sponsor, and the Persern Group's commitment to the city of Newport Beach, an overview of the project, including a description of the community's support for this proposed project, as well as a discussion of the benefits provided to the community. As was previously described, the group assembled to prepare the proposed project in front of you tonight involves technical team experts, really with a keen understanding and expertise working in the Newport community. This is largely reflective of the group working on One Uptown, and hopefully, you can see the evolution of the design and the process and the project represented here at 1300 Bristol. This group includes a dedicated group, Springbrook Realty Advisors, focused on preparing the Affordable Housing Implementation Plan, and then those technical team members, including landscape architecture, architecture, engineering, and land-use attorney support. So with that, I just wanted to spend a moment just describing the Persern Group and their commitment to the city of Newport Beach and developing really high-quality projects here in the community that reflect the community conditions, input, and ultimately, the context of the project, providing benefits to the community for the provision of new residential units, including units affordable to lower-income households. Founded in 1988, the group is particularly unique in that it's privately owned and self-funded. It's a family-operated office right here in Newport. The commitment to the community is really unparalleled. The Persern Group is committed to working deeply with their community partners, establishing long-term connections and relationships, and ultimately, helping to improve the quality of life for current and future residents. This group is committed to Newport specifically, including the airport area, and I'm sure you're all familiar, it sounds like, with the One Uptown project, and the high quality and high quality of work developed and implemented at that location. On the screen are just some images of the One Uptown project, really just showing kind of the fruits of that, the fruits of the labor with that work, just some really wonderful design, high-quality amenities, enhancing the environment in that location. And really, what we see at 1300 Bristol is, again, an evolution of this design process and really enhancing and embellishing on those qualities that have been so well-received. So providing just a brief project overview, of course, staff was able to present some of those project particulars. The site, of course, located at Bristol and Spruce. And a discussion of just the existing context on the screen is an image of that existing 33,000-square-foot office building, two stories at the corner location there, where the proposed project is envisioned. Now moving forward a little bit more into that project context, so how does this project actually fit within this community? This has been a very thoughtfully-designed project, working hand-in-hand with staff to really understand the context of this environment and propose a project that fits within the existing scale, massing, and existing conditions at this location, ultimately really finding a way to thread the needle and find an opportunity to develop a very high-quality, high-designed project in an area in need of revitalization envisioned for residential development, both in the general plan and in the zoning. So with that said, I am going to turn it over to Erwin, who is going to present some of the additional architectural features. We'll be walking through some of the site design, the perspectives, then moving into landscape architecture, and ultimately, I'll be back up to wrap it up.
Thank you, Amanda. Again, my name is Erwin Yao. I'm a principal with TCA Architects. I'm really excited to be here, to be part of another great team that Persern has put together to put a project together in Newport Beach. Let me kind of advance this slide. Our strategy from the start is really to take what we've learned and liked from previous projects that we've worked with Persern Group, and especially from One Uptown, and apply it here, and really refine the craft, refine the product that we're delivering here, and we think it's going to continue to evolve and continue to get better. Let me take you on a kind of a tour of the project. I'm trying to answer some of the questions preemptively that was brought up by Commissioners. On the left-hand side is a ground-level plan. Guests are coming off of a driveway into Spruce, and there is dedicated guest parking spaces for them. There's 34 spaces. It is the one that's labeled G along that left side. It's located in a way where there is good view access to the lobby and the leasing areas, so they know exactly where to go. Residents will be coming off of the driveway on Bristol Street, coming into the parking garage. There is resident parking on the ground level, as well as two-level subterranean as well. There is a total of 200, sorry, 346 parking spaces. The requirement is 233 spaces, based off of the project providing affordable housing. So we are providing more than what's required, based off of what we feel is a good market rate of how many parking spaces we need for a project like this. On the bottom-left-hand corner of the project, we have the leasing office, lobby, mail, and business center. We're starting to see a lot more business centers and larger in size as we start to work from home more and need that kind of amenity space, and we want to be able to provide that here. On the right-hand side, we have the typical podium level, again, 193 levels on five levels of residential units, a mix of studios, ones and twos. And because we have a really nice square site, which we don't always get, we have a really efficient design that surrounds itself with an active courtyard in the middle, and when I call Matt up later, he'll be able to walk through some of those amenity spaces. But we do have the clubhouse and the fitness area on that level that lives out to the pool, and in total, almost 4,000-square-feet amenities there. Continuing forward onto the perspective, this is a shot on the corner of Bristol and Spruce. Our design approach on the elevations is really to celebrate the corners and emphasize those areas that has the most impact. So in doing that, we want to clad those corner units with stone tile. That's what we have here on this bottom as a material sample. It's the same one that we've used on One Uptown. We feel like the material, the stone, really shows well, wears well, and has kind of a nice, rich feel to it. On the ground level of this rendering, you'll see the corner, it's the leasing business center, and that's going to be clad in storefront and glass to help articulate that corner. Moving down the street, this is a perspective from Spruce. Again, stone is applied to the corner of these units here as well. The corner units on the upper level also have higher ceilings, more volume, and additional glass, that's why you see additional windows on the top floor, corner balconies, and metal railings on the corner as well. And in between, we use different colors, stucco, to break up the mass with articulated planes. This page, in your packet of the submittal, we had all of the major street elevations as part of the submittal package. Really, this slide is just to show that the building really has 360-degree architecture. There really isn't a backside to the project. We've articulated and elevated the building on all four sides in a similar manner and applied the same process as we would to the main elevations. The building sections really helps articulate how the building sits on the site vertically. Again, we have one level of parking on grade, two levels of a basement, and five levels of apartments above that. We did explore putting two levels of parking above grade, but that would raise the building up another 13 to 15 feet, and we felt that this design was much more appropriate in situating itself onto the site and in the surrounding area, even though going down to a second level of basement would be more expensive to build than going up additional floor. And then the last slide for me, a material slide. Again, we have a material board that's sitting here showing the material samples in colors. We have the stone sample that we've brought, that is what we're proposing on the corners of the units, and again, the material that we've used on One Uptown. And then we're proposing a mix of various stucco colors as the body of the building, and I'm available for questions at the end of the presentation. But for now, let me bring up Matt Jackson from MJS Landscape, who's our landscape architect.
Thank you, Erwin. Matt Jackson with MJS Design Group, we're landscape architects, and we're located here in Newport Beach. We're landscape architects and are located here in Newport Beach. In this first slide, we really wanted to talk about our process of design. We think it's really important to make place-making important to the project. We're also giving these larger buildings the human scale. So we spend a lot of time on materials, true materials, pattern, texture, finishes. So the things you really live with, you touch, you feel, we really feel those are in the landscape. And a lot of those are on the podium level. The podium level is where you're going to entertain with your friends, your family, small groups, large groups. So we look at all of those things. We really want to understand the context of the building. So this being in Newport Beach, we're using this casual, elegant design. We really want to kind of emphasize the indoor-outdoor quality. Newport Beach, great weather. So this really gives you kind of a feel for the landscape and the part that people really live with. This is a combination of three levels. So our scope includes the ground level, which is perimeter landscaping. The podium deck, where really you're going to have the best indoor-outdoor living, large-scale spaces. And then the last space is a rooftop deck. It's about 750 square feet. It's a lot more intimate, great views. You'd use it probably in smaller groups. So the perimeter of the project, as it relates to the landscape, is really the streetscapes on Bristol and Spruce. And then we've used iconic planting to identify the corner, which is the leasing center to kind of find your front door of the building. So we're using a different style of planting design there. The perimeter of the project is walkable. There's no gates. You can walk the community. So in the evening, if you wanted to walk your project, you can. There's no, there's no gate stopping you. And then there is an off-leash dog park. So one of the biggest amenities, you get home in the evening and you want to take your dog. That is an opportunity you'll have on the ground level. The podium level is really where you're going to have your most outdoor amenities. At the bottom is the club and the fitness. So understanding the indoor-outdoor qualities of that is really important to us. Making the club room feel bigger by extending to the outdoors is really important. And then finding your little spot. So if there's, you can go through the plan. There's, there's spots for two people. There's, there's spots for larger entertaining. Same thing with the fitness. We really think it's great. You roll up the doors. You can break out of the fitness and you have outdoor space. The pool terrace has been pushed to the backside of the project because of best sun exposure. So along with sunning, there'll be shady opportunities with cabanas. But a lot of really great spots to entertain or get outside. The last area, as it relates to landscape, is the rooftop deck. So another great amenity in these more dense projects is to get up, explore the view. You'll be able to look out here to the east. On the rooftop deck, this could be a private party space or it could be someplace you just come up and watch the game. But again, really trying to get these areas to be amenitized, activated, having spaces that are, that are well-designed or spaces that are used. And we take a lot of pride in that. So we find the amenity package that's here. The, the level of fit and the finish is quite important at these projects. These are example imagerys from One Uptown. You can see again, the high level of fit, the finish, really comfortable spaces, spots that you can really find a great home for yourself. So you can see that here in these images. For the landscape, we're always going to use non-invasive, drought-tolerant, well-adapted plants that are easily maintained. Evergreen, where they need to be evergreen deciduous, where they need to be deciduous, but always having pattern and texture and color changes. I'll bring Amanda up to talk about the remainder of the presentation.
All right. So one of the components that we're very proud to share with you tonight is letters of support that the applicant has received from over 17 nearby businesses, property owners, stakeholders involved in, in the daily life of Newport. This is something that the applicant has worked extremely diligently to work with neighbors, businesses, to understand the needs and specific concerns and address those proactively through this process. And that's really been able to be accommodated through the site design development and negotiations with staff to arrive at the proposed project in front of you. And then ultimately, just to really summarize what we hope to have shared with you tonight and can certainly expand upon, three key benefits that the project, we believe, brings to the community of Newport and particularly the airport area. First is addressing the community's housing needs, providing both new rental opportunities for market-rate tenants as well as new opportunities for housing affordable to lower-income households. Certainly providing a mixed-income project that helps meet the city's six-cycle housing element arena needs. The second is the ability to support your local businesses. As you saw on the project context exhibit, this is right next to Plaza Newport, an opportunity for new residents, goods, and services to be located in a mixed-use environment envisioned by the general plan, zoning, and residential overlay, creating eyes on the street, revitalizing an underutilized and older office building into a new vibrant center that could really help support existing and nearby businesses and help them thrive throughout the day. And then finally, again, as a commitment to the city of Newport Beach, working with the community to develop a project that really reflects the local conditions, respects the community, respects the environment, and helps to revitalize the airport area into a walkable residential mixed-use district. Again, we hope that we were able to communicate those. We have all of our team members here to help answer any questions you may have. And thank you again to yourselves for your attention tonight and to the staff for their hard work in helping to bring this project forward.
Thank you. We'll begin up here for, if any of your commissioners have any questions for the applicant. Toldens, Peter? All right, a few. You can toss this to whoever is responsible. I noticed balconies in various locations, except for the studios and maybe some of the one-bedrooms. Are those the ones that are earmarked for low and, low and very low income? Those apartments? Or are they scattered?
The studio units don't have balconies, and that is regardless of whether or not it's an affordable unit or market rate. That's just the way that we've designed those units. I believe all of the one-bedrooms do have balconies. So the affordable count or the affordable units that is earmarked is a mix between the ones, twos, and studios.
Okay. Since you're there. Trash areas, I noticed there are two on the, on that ground floor. Now, does a tenant bring it down and drop it off? Do they have a chute in the building? How does it work?
There are chutes on the upper levels of the, or at the same levels as the units off of the corridors. So they do not need to bring it down to the ground level.
All right. So you would bring it to the chute on the other side of the building and drop it off?
Correct.
These are little improvements I see. Number one, on Spruce, the pull-off for parking holds about three cars. Could that be extended for another car? Since that area, if I, if somebody's going to rent one of these, they're going, they're not allowed to go in the garage. They're going to pull off there and walk to the leasing office. Tony, that might fall on your lap.
Well, the plan for that turnout was always for it to be just a pickup-drop-off for Uber, Lyft, et cetera. It was not intended to be for parking. In fact, there's no parking allowed. It's posted no parking on Spruce today.
It is today.
Right. So it's, it's, that was never intended to be for parking, for someone to pull in, park for any length of time, to go into the leasing center, et cetera. There's onsite parking for, for that. This is just really, and we've talked about it with the applicant as we were going through, the purpose was, was for the rideshare vehicles.
So back to the master plan. If somebody wanted to go look at the apartments to rent, they'd have to go in the garage, find a way to, how, how do you get in if you're not a tenant?
If I, I'll go back to the ground-level plan. The guest parking or potential resident parking would come off of Spruce and into the driveway, which would be paged north on the ground-level plan. That would not have a gate on it during business hours. And so they would be able to come in. There are, part of that 34 guest parking spaces would be available to them to park as well, to be able then go and visit the leasing office.
All right. Because it says call box. I assume that's for after-hours.
That would be for after-hours, correct.
All right. Just on that same plane, loading zone, trash staging area. So a moving van would park there.
Correct.
You have one door to get into that elevator, too. Don't you think you might need two there just for wheeling in, you know, sofas, beds, and everything instead of one door? It's just a thought.
Sure.
It's your plan. You know where I'm speaking?
Yes. Right next to the elevator. We do have a door there. We can absolutely look at either a larger door.
Just a thought. And that's it. Is that a freight elevator?
It would be a moving elevator with a higher ceiling in the cabin.
Tony, do you think the traffic will require a signal at Spruce? I noticed the cars and how many trips, but
No.
Not that we like signals, but you think it'll be fine?
No, I wouldn't.
That's all for now. Thank you. Good, Eric?
Yeah, just one, one more, too. On the, on the EV parking, is that rotational? Or is that set by the guest? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, not guest, the resident. So if you're a resident, can you park in the EV? Will, is it designated for you? Or is it kind of a rotational based on your needs?
All of the resident parking will be assigned. And so I think as part of the management, if you have an EV car, they would assign you that EV parking space.
Gotcha. Do you think you have enough EV space based on kind of trends? Or is there an easy way for you to change the voltage or add electricity to that so that you can accommodate should the needs arise? Considering the state saying that everything has to go by a certain period of time, too, electric?
I do, right now, we're complying with what the code is, which is, believe it is 10%. That's quite a bit. I think California's a little bit ahead already. It's a hard answer to, or a hard question to answer whether or not we have enough. But I believe as part of current market projects right now, this is what a lot of similar-type projects are providing.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. See, and thank you. And we'll go ahead and take public comments.
Chair Lowry, members of the commission, my name is Jim Mosher. First of all, I have a technical comment. In the proposed resolution on handwritten page 34, at the top of that page, there is a fact, number three, which is acknowledging that this project is very close to the airport. And the third line down is asking you to assure the city council that the project is below what it calls the maximum transitional imagery surface heights. And thus is within the building heights of the airport environs land use plant. I'm absolutely sure that the word is not imagery. It is imaginary. The airport has imaginary surfaces around it. And I don't think it's the maximum. I think the project has to be below all of the imaginary surfaces. Probably the minimum surface would be comfortable. Not that it's over the maximum or under the maximum. So the real comment I wanted to make is, it seems to me there's a little bit of a sleight of hand going on with this proposal. We understand that there are 12 of the apartments that will be dedicated for very low-income families. Under the state law, those 12 qualify the project, 12 out of 77, for a 50% density bonus, which allows the project relief from our local building standards or zoning and planning standards. Yet some of the relief that's being asked for is not to make that project of the 77 units with 12 very low-income units feasible, but it is to make the additional 77 units that are going on top of it feasible. So we're asking for relief, not to make the affordable project feasible, but to make the transfer. That seems to be a problem. As to the 50%, again, this is just, I guess, a technicality. But the resolution says that that is in accordance with chapter 2032 of our municipal code, which is very out of date. It hasn't kept up with changes in state law. It says the maximum you can get is 35% bonus. As to the transfer of the development rights, I have a real problem with all the findings that you have to make, which are on page 38. First, you have to find that there's a public benefit. I don't see that there is a public benefit. There seems to be a private one. And this Newport Place Plan community actually requires 30% affordable housing in it. They're proposing 24 units to meet that. But then when you add the 77, it's actually diluting it. So we're not getting as much affordability as we should be getting in this area. You're supposed to make sure that it's not increasing the intensity, the amount of traffic, both the transfer development thing and the housing in Newport Plant Community require that the new project does not generate more traffic than the allowable non-residential use that would go there. In this case, the extra 77 are not increasing intensity. I didn't see that we made that finding. And then finally, that it won't be changing the scale. And certainly by transferring and having to put it on top, you are changing the scale from 55 to 78 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Another comment?
Hello, Commissioner. My name is Court Ensign. I didn't know about this project. I was told to come here on behalf of several owners of buildings in the area. And wow, I saw this project. People spent their entire lives trying to live in Newport Beach. You know, we have setbacks. And for a number of years, people like yourselves and people before you were cognizant enough to build slopes and trees and try to hide big, huge structures so that as you drive down major thoroughfares, you're not looking at these big structures. And so when I see something like this, and I'm in commercial real estate, I deal with a lot of tenants. Once you approve something like this, there's several other developers that are going to say, we want to do the same thing. But you have to ask yourself, is this what you want the future of Newport Beach to look like? Or do you want to keep it in the aesthetic design that it has always maintained, that attracts the highest quality of people to live in this community? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other further comments? All right. Applicant have any closing comments they'd like to make or any additional?
Chair Lowry, if I may. I don't know if we asked the applicant if they read and agreed to the conditions of the
I was literally, that was my question if they had any closing. I was just about to say, you got me. And then if, if not, I just was going to say, is with the resolution, does outside of the, the fire change? Or was it 39, I believe, condition 39? Is there any, any, are you guys good with the conditions that's in the resolution?
We are.
Okay. Great. All right. All right. And just before we close, anything staff would like to add on the record? Before we close? Oh, we got a, Peter has a question. Jim, Mr. Mosher pointed out a technical, technical issue with the transfer of development rights. I wrote a bonus. He said it's now on, on, on the books, 35% versus, 35 units versus 50. You want to clarify?
Certainly, certainly. First of all, yeah, there really is no sleight of hand going on here. The Newport Place Plan community text requires 30% of the base units to be made affordable. And they're satisfying that through density bonus, and that's half of the affordable units. The other half they're providing. So they are satisfying those requirements.
So they are satisfying those requirements. We do believe that the findings, there are facts to support the findings for the transfer That's really the only comments that I have.
Thank you. I just wanted, for the record, thanks.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was one other thing. You know, Mr. Mosher is correct. Our density bonus ordinance is out of date. We are working on that. Our ordinance right now says the maximum that you could get is thirty-five percent. That's just out of date. State law allows for up to fifty percent, and that's what the applicant is taking advantage of in this case. And so we are consistent with state law.
Okay. Just, I'm going to come back to the question about condition of approval number five. Should it say two-thirty-three or three-forty-six?
So two-hundred-and-thirty-three, that's the maximum number per density bonus state law that we can require the applicant to provide. So that's what that number comes from. That's from state law based on the unit count that they have. The applicant is proposing three-hundred-and-forty-six. They're proposing more than what we can require.
Commissioner Rosine, I might also add that should be condition number one talks about the project being in substantial performance with the plans. And I would prefer not to have a specific number of three-forty-six because while that is what's on the plan today, when they get to the structural part of this and design this building, you know, there may be a little bit of tweaks here. They're far in excess of the minimum requirements, and so I think that substantial conformance condition is satisfactory.
I understand and appreciate that. I just wanted to make sure it was clear. Good night. Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing first. Does it just have questions for staff? Since we can't hardly see the color material board, I'm curious about, when I heard the word plaster, it gives, sends shivers. On what type of plaster? What is it? Are you going to do trial finish smooth so it's not collecting? What are you hoping to put on it?
Seems like that question's to me. What we're proposing is a twenty-thirty finish, which is not a smooth trial that you would see on a custom home, but it's definitely not a, I would say, popcorn finish on it. It is what you would normally see on projects like this, and is what is the finish that we have on uptown Newport as well. So we're trying to be consistent with at least the level of finish that we've already built in Newport before.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
All right. I think I'm ready to make a motion on this.
I'll close the public comments section. Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public comments portion, and then we can bring it up here for a resolution or further discussion.
I jumped the gun, but, you know, I was at the office across the way on the seventy-three law office, and I was on the third floor, and I was looking across. There's adequate trees that kind of prevent that side from really any view. It just, I could stare at that, and I can envision what this is, what this is going to be. There's businesses, there's the walkability to dining, services, medical that we approved as a commission right across the street, which actually needs some additional parking. So seeing that you have adequate parking, maybe a deal could be struck there. But it's, there's walkability. There's office. We saw a letter from one of your supporters that said that that might be an opportunity for some of their, either their clients or somebody to run out that could walk, or a business owner could walk to there. So there's, this is part of this village that I think that the city council and what some of our ideas for the future bring. So this is a piece of the puzzle. So I'm supportive of this. I like the project, and I think the discern group is doing a good job representing what our vision here going forward is. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve the, which would be a recommendation to the council, the following major site development review, environmental impact reported, and affordable housing implementation plan, traffic study, and transfer development rights. So I have that all correct? Perfect.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. We'll go ahead and go to a vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Congratulations. I give... All right, we'll be back to our agenda here as we finish up. Take a...
Number two.
Number two?
Did we do two?
Yeah. So we'll just go through this quickly. In section eight here, item number five, motion for reconsideration. I don't see any. We'll go through that, and we'll just go on to item number six, a report by community developer, I'm sorry, development director, or request for matters which a planning commission member would like to place, like to be placed on a future agenda.
Chair Lowry, I'll go ahead and do the director's report. I'll keep it short. I just want to let the commission know that on February eighth, the city council did approve our housing element, and I think we had a comment about what the future of the city would be. We are looking at adding additional housing to the airport area. So again, this project that we just reviewed and approved is consistent with that. It's also consistent with the housing element. So as I know, the council approved it. We did submit it to the state for its mandatory sixty-day review. Moving forward, the junior lifeguard facility, everyone loves the junior lifeguards, that will be heard by the coastal commission on Wednesday, March ninth. It's a virtual meeting, if you have the time to sit through their meeting. But that's a very interesting project that the city council is partnering up with the lifeguard foundation to kind of split the cost of that, to actually create a permanent facility for the, for the junior lifeguards. The last item on my list here is really our next meeting, which will be March seventeenth. We can wear green that day. March third will be canceled. We don't have any agenda items for that day. And we do have a pretty full agenda for that with two consent items for encroachments in the right-of-way, a coastal development permit for some slope stabilization at Park Newport.
You know that St. Patrick's?
Yes, I do. That's why I said we would be wearing green. Yes.
No. Is that, you're going to be a late meeting, or are we going to get out of here for a beer?
We have a fairly heavy agenda. Two other items on the agenda are an ordinance change related to residential care facilities, and then our annual general plan progress report. We could probably get through the meeting in an hour and a half.
All right.
I just had a question.
And that concludes my report.
On page eight, on the last item that we saw, I didn't want to bring it to that, but there are two projects that were mentioned on there, Newport Crossings and four-forty Von Karman. Do you have any update on that when, you know, those, we approved them here in this commission, and we haven't seen any love, you know, from whoever's holding that up?
Newport Crossings, that project has been plan-checked. We have a set of drawings that are about this big around at this point in time. It's basically complete in its plan-check review, and so the owner has not pulled the trigger and actually started construction, but we do expect that to occur fairly soon. That's the Newport Crossings project. The forty-four-hundred Von Karman building, which is actually proposed by the applicant that you saw here tonight, that application, there is a pending lawsuit over the environmental review for that project, and that has not yet been resolved. We have been working with them behind the scenes to kind of finalize some of their project plans, including the parking structure. But we do anticipate that with resolution of that lawsuit, hopefully fairly soon, they'll start their working drawings and move forward with that project fairly quickly. So the discern group is interested in getting that underway.
No other questions and any requests for excuse of absence coming up? Looks like we're all going to be here. All right. Well, then let's go ahead and adjourn at, what are we at? Nine-eleven, it looks like, on February seventeenth?